A very good morning to one and all present here. On behalf of team Vikasa, our desire is to extend a gracious welcome to all of you in the first special session of this two-day CA Students Conference.
Rohan, do you know what is so special about this session?
Yes, of course we are. The theme of this session is BOS Operations that Drew Professionals 2047. True professionals are the ones who are simply mustering up the energy, effort, heart, soul, and grit to get the job done, whatever the job may be. Number 2047 is a combination of the vibrations of energies of number 2 and number 0 and attributes and influences of number 4 and number 7.
True Rohan, professionalism, it's not the job you do, it's how you do the job.
Today we have with us Indian personalities who have proven that if you want to achieve success in our life, nobody can stop from achieving it.
Then without taking much time, we should begin with the session. Dignitaries adding glory to the session are: CA Jaya Chahira, Chairman, SSEB ICAI and Conference Chairman; CA Durgesh Kabra, Vice Chairman, Board of Studies; CA Manoj Sahu, Secretary, Vadodara Branch of WIRC of ICAI; Mr. Harsh Veekarya, Secretary, Vikasa Vadodara.
I now request our calmest CA Manoj Sahu to give his opening remarks for this session.
Good morning to all the students and the session speaker. CA Jaya Chahira sir, the Chairman of the SSEB and also the Conference Chairman; and our second speaker, CA Pramod Kumar sir, the Vice Chairman of the SSEB and also the Conference Co-Chairman. A very warm welcome to all of you. Friends, the world's economy and the technology is changing very fast at a pace which we can't believe and our profession is going with this change at the same pace. Friends, we need to update ourselves with the new eras of the profession which are coming either in the technology or there may be some other topics like. I must say that the Chairman and the Vice Chairman of the SSEB is working very hard to keep our students and the professional competitive with the globe. With the end of this session, all the students will come to know what are the various initiatives which our BOS is going to take for the benefit of our students. Thank you.
Thank you sir.
Friend, we have among us: CA Jaya Chahira, Central Council Member, Chairman, SSEB ICAI and Conference Chairman. His dynamism and aptitude towards the profession has been an inspiration to many. Sir, we request CA Jaya Chahira to address the delegates.
A very good morning to all of you. And you know, this session, we had to cover up two aspects. Number one, the initiatives of the Board of Studies' operations for this particular year. And number two, the topic that has been assigned to me is the true professional 2047. Well, students, you know very well fifty percent is the passing ratio for CA. So, the session should begin and end. There is a beginning and there is an end. But because the beginning is quite slow, let me end up this session in time so that fifty percent be achieved. Well, so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to just dwell upon very quickly on this aspect of the true professional 2047, right? Regarding the initiatives of Board of Studies' operations, I have given you the hint in my previous deliberation. So, let me straight up start with the topic and before that, once again compliments to team Baroda. The topic has been very well designed and that is the true professional. So friends, what is the true professional? Let it be 2047 or 2147 or 2247. But what do you mean by true professional? So when you start with true professional, the first and foremost thing comes up with domain expertise. Sir, मैं आज आपके साथ अभी जो बात कर रहा हूं for a few minutes, मैं ये चाहता हूं कि ये एकदम simple हो जैसे कि मैं अपने friends के साथ बात कर रहा हूं, as if I'm talking to my friends, I'll be covering up a few points and from that, if the students can pick up only two or three and can work upon that, I am sure that it will enrich their life. So when you talk about professional, what is the first and foremost ingredient of being a professional? The first one is domain expertise or we can say knowledge or we can say competence. I use the word domain expertise. Friends, वापिस, जैसे मैं students, friends के साथ बात कर रहा हूं, अपने दोस्तों के साथ बात कर रहा हूं, आप अपने जो favourites हैं ना, उनका list बनाएंगे। आप सबके कोई ना कोई favourites होंगे? Maybe किसी का Virat Kohli हो सकता है, somebody might be having Virat Kohli and somebody might be having Harjit Singh or somebody might be having Prabhu Deva and I don't know, right? What your generation must be fond of? So, अगर आप इन सब लोगों में common चीज ढूंढेंगे, common, तो that is domain expertise. If Virat Kohli was not very good in betting, where would he have been? क्या आप उसको जानते होते? I am sure not. Similarly, Harjit Singh was not excellent in singing. Would you know them? Know him? The answer is no. Similarly, अगर आपको अपनी जगह बनानी है, भाई बात तो बड़ी-बड़ी कर ली हमने, aptitude, attitude or altitude की बात कर ली, but उस high altitude पे जाने के लिए सिर्फ किसी bookish code से काम थोड़ा होता है, books में से चार point बोलती है, तो क्या altitude पे पहुंच जाओगे? नहीं। उसके लिए, जैसे कोई Kohli पहुंचा होगा altitude पे या Harjit Singh पहुंचा होगा, I am giving such examples, जो मुझे लगता है कि आप students, आज के students link कर पाए, मैं पुराने जमाने का हूं, तो शायद मेरे लिए Virat Kohli की जगह पे kapilde हो सकता था and maybe Harjit Singh की जगह पे Kishore Kumar हो सकता था, maybe Varun Dhawan की जगह पे Big B हो सकता था, मैं आपके जमाने के हिसाब से बात करना हूं। So friends, आप भी अगर किसी मुकाम तक पहुंचना चाहते हैं, if you really want to reach up to an altitude, then first and foremost thing is the way starts with the domain expertise. You should be expert in whatever you do. If you are into income tax, you have to be excellent in income tax. If you are into GST, you must be excellent into that. If you are into audit, excellent in that. Whatever the field you choose, whatever the field you choose, you have to be excellent in that. ये आपकी first and foremost requirement है। So if you are studying only for the purpose of passing the exams, तो शायद आप कुछ कम कर रहे हैं। Your purpose should not be only to pass the exam, your purpose should be to be excellent in it. Let me give an example this. Suppose tomorrow, on a particular topic where your domain expertise is there and there is a conference going in Bangalore and that person should say, क्या इस topic के Baroda में ये भाई साहब जो है, वही सबसे अच्छे speaker हो सके। Your target should be like that। आपका target ऐसा होना चाहिए। आज आप अपनी city में बैठे हुए, इंडिया में किसी भी कोने में एक बड़ा program हो रहा है and they have to call you. Why only India? Globally, globally। So for that, you require domain expertise. And अगर हम सिर्फ exam के लिए पढ़ रहे हैं, तो देखिए situation क्या है? Imagine a situation where a doctor is doing surgery. Where a doctor is doing surgery and surgery करते-करते-करते, he found out that the problem is with the left side of the heart and not the right side. And he says, "Oh, ये तो मैंने option में छोड़ दिया। I cannot handle this operation." Can you imagine this? The answer is no. So similarly, similarly, when you are into your profession, your clients have all the reasons to expect utmost expertise. So professional, whether it is 1947 or it is 2047, professionals की पहली खासियत तो होती है, domain expertise, domain expertise. So students should work in that particular direction. Let us take another example, let us take another example. I have heard about one particular doctor in Chennai. When my brother's son had some major issue regarding heart, the doctors in Surat said that, "Sorry, for this, you will have to go to Mr. Charien, Chennai." We went to Ahmedabad, from Ahmedabad also we got the same name, that it is a very complicated case and you have to go to Chennai. When we approached Mumbai doctors, Mumbai people also said you have to go to Chennai. So now the thing is, I was surprised, क्या बात है? किसी एक व्यक्ति में क्या खासियत होनी चाहिए? कि Surat के हर आदमी बोल रहा है Chennai जाना, Mumbai का हर आदमी डॉक्टर बोल रहा है Chennai जाना और ये डॉक्टर कह रहा है। So, क्या होगा उसका level of expertise? क्या आपको और मुझे इस category में नहीं आना चाहिए? आपको और मुझे इस category में नहीं आना चाहिए? कि Bangalore में किसी client को कोई CA बोले, "Boss, Baroda के इस CA के पास चले जा, आपका काम हो जाएगा", right? Gurghao में कोई बोले कि नहीं, "Baroda के इस CA के पास चले जा।" So I think this is one very important thing and friends, believe me, यही सबसे बड़ा religion है। सबसे बड़ा religion ही ये है, just imagine the scene. एक ये situation में रोज temple जाता हूं, well, that is also very good, not an issue. But दूसरा ये है, think about that doctor, क्या उसकी skill होगी? कि अलग-अलग area में से अगर आपको परेशानी हो तो, जाना ही पड़ेगा यानी solve it. I think this is one of the best examples of being professional. So, while you are into domain expertise, some few basic things is, your understanding. When you go for article ship, how you understand the scene? You know, what you observe in terms of the various businesses? Let me give a very simple example here, मैं यहां पे आपको एक बहुत interesting example दे रहा हूं and this example is very much true from, you know, central Gujarat to south Gujarat. I think most of the participants would be from central Gujarat to south Gujarat. There is one particular community, there is one particular community, you know, जो सबसे ज्यादा हड्डी के डॉक्टर produce करती है, there was one particular community. Do you know that community? The answer is, Parsis. And while I was very young, I was wondering, क्या ये हड्डी के डॉक्टर Parsi क्यों होते? So then, I could understand one thing, that Parsis believe that while you are living, you should help the people and even in the time of death, you should help the people. And that is the reason, they don't bury or burn the body. They have something called agyari, their fire temple and along with that, a well type structure on which they put the body for the vultures. They believe that there is an eco cycle and even the vultures have a reason to get the food. And so they would put the dead body, the vultures would eat the body and after three-four days, they will take back the body, whence the body would of course be reduced to skeleton. So, the point is that the Parsis could keep on watching skeletons, skeletons, skeletons. From that, rather than just studying about skeleton from the books, whether the human body is 208 or 213 bones, they have practically done that. And because they had done practically, they become doctors in this particular field and their subsequent generations took up formal degrees and that was one of the reasons why highest doctors in this particular ortho industry were Parsis. Now my point is, because they had access to bones, to skeletons, they become that doctor. Tell me, आपको और मुझे किस बात का access? We have practical access during article ship to all the various businesses, different, different type of clients, different type of segments of businesses and different levels, organized as unorganized. So, we can be the best professionals, we can be the best entrepreneurs, even you have the industry exposure, that does mean, अगर आप इसको gujaji में बोलते हैं, because it is Gujarat, Baroda, तो थोड़ा सा gujaji बोलने के, एक चीज बोल कर इसको gujaji में बोलते हैं, आंख नाक कान खुला रखो, while you are into article ship, while you are into article ship, it is utmost essential, it is utmost essential that, you know, आप observe कर, एक-एक चीज, what your client is doing? What is this purchase policy? What is the sales policy? What is the HR policy? किस तरह का वो काम कर रहा है आपका client? Right? What is the, you know, credit period? How is the collection department doing the work? Right? So many things you can learn, about the systems, about the lacuna, about the loopholes, so many things you will learn and that will help you to be great professionals. So anyway, that is it. Second very important thing of course, needless to say to the youngsters is technology. Today, it is very, very essential for you to understand technology in the best possible way, whether it is Python or it is Java, whether it is advanced Excel or it is Zoho Books. You require understanding this technology. And friends, believe me, there was a time where youngster had to get trained through the elders but the times are going to change with more and more technology. In the days in future, the elders will require youngsters for their guidance. So this is where your opportunities are, so technology. Another very crucial thing, friends, you have to understand is regarding your language and your drafting skills. Friends, let us understand, let us understand, you might be an India topper in CA but if you are not very good in drafting, if you are not very good in public speaking, if you cannot communicate well, if you are not a pursuer, you communicator, then in that case, there are lesser chances of your being accepted by the others. So it is not only the academic part which is important, but how you communicate? Let it be effective public speaking, let it be speaking in a particular meeting or even drafting. Can you imagine, can you imagine tomorrow you are in Reliance or Hindustan Unilever or say even Google or Microsoft? And you draft later on the letter pad of these some things and if there are mistakes in that, is it acceptable? Probably the answer is no. So one of the very important and crucial things for students is improving upon your language, whether in terms of grammar or in terms of, you know, spelling or in terms of your delivery, in terms of your, you can say vocabulary, in all the ways you have to improve upon because it is the language which is the first connection with the two people. दो लोगों के बीच में connection का जो जरिया है ना, सर काम तो तब करोगे जब काम आएगा। आप Manoj Sahu जी से पूछ लीजिए, आप Vinod Pailwani जी से पूछ लीजिए, कि काम लाना ज्यादा important है, काम तब करोगे जब काम आएगा और काम तब आएगा जब आप लोगों के साथ ठीक से communicate कर पाओगे। So your language has to be very important. Another very crucial thing that you require learning is office management. Is office management, systems, documentation, how the entire office is being managed? How the documents are kept and what are the systems? Sir, the future belongs to system, जो system को samjhiega, वो grow करेगा। Otherwise, एक छोटी सी office लेके बैठेगा कोई व्यक्ति, if you really want to grow beyond the limit. Friends, अगर मैं आपसे सवाल पूछता हूं, what does McDonald's sell? तो आप कहेंगे burger, no, McDonald's sell system. Burger तो आप और मैं भी बना सकते हैं, burger तो आप और मैं भी बना सकते हैं लेकिन McDonald's का सबसे important चीज है, systems. They have developed a particular system and through that, a replicating model. जब तक आप systems को नहीं samajte, अगर आप सिर्फ technical knowledge लेके बैठ जाते, systems नहीं samajte, how to scale up? आप आगे नहीं बढ़ सकते, आप growth, आपका linear होगा, you cannot have an exponential growth. So this is very important. Another crucial thing is, update. आपकी और मेरी position तो sword जैसी है या knight जैसी है। अगर हमारी धार, रही तरह से time to time, उसको तेज नहीं बनाया जाए, right? If you are not sharpening our skills from time to time, then you understand what is going to be the position. Another very crucial thing is time management. And friends, when you talk about time management, it is about life management. Time management, time management नहीं है सिर्फ, ये life management है। और जब मैं आपको time management की बात कहता हूं, तो मैं दूसरों की तरह ये नहीं कहता, कि अब बहुत serious हो के time management करो। I want the youngsters to play cricket also. I want the youngsters to be into garba also. भाई आप Baroda से हैं तो तो garba करना, आपका जन्मसिद्ध अधिकार है, right? तो garba भी करिए, dance party में भी जाइए, cricket भी खेलिए, volleyball भी खेलिए, guitar भी बजाइए, drums भी बजाइए और साथ-साथ अपनी जिंदगी की हर चीज को बहुत ही बेहतरीन तरह से करिए। ये time management है। Time management ये नहीं है कि because of CA, मैंने सब कुछ छोड़ दिया। Foundation में paane बोला, garba छोड़ दो, enter में mommy ने बोला, friends को छोड़ दो, एक दिन ऐसा आएगा final में, कि CA ही छोड़ दो। No, 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 no. Youngsters, youngsters ही होने चाहिए, youngsters, youngsters ही होने चाहिए and boss, ऐसा किसने कहा कि आप ही youngsters हैं? ये Manoj Sahu जो बैठे हैं, वो भी young ही है, ये Vinod Pailwani है, वो भी young है, Kunal Brambat भी young है and boss, मैं कैसे exception हो सकता हूं? ठीक है, तुमसे age थोड़ी सी ज्यादा है, आप लोगों से age 25 साल ज्यादा है, वो 25 साल कोई ज्यादा नहीं होती, थोड़ी कमी होती है। So youngsters तो जो है ना, वो आपका attitude है, youngsters attitude है, time management एक skill है और एक attitude की बात है। वो ये किस काम का, जो dance party में नहीं गया हो और cricket ना खेला हो, क्या फायदा both group first attempt में pass होना? Friends, believe me, ये possible है। मैंने भी यही किया है, मैं भी तो कभी student था, मैंने तो कभी dance party नहीं छोड़ी, आज भी नहीं छोड़ता, आज भी मेरे साथ आप garba में आ जाइए बिल्कुल, garba में आ जाइए, आज भी नहीं छोड़ता। तो samjhie, time management बहुत crucial है। आपने कई लोगों से सुना होगा कि यार, time ही नहीं है मेरे पास, time ही नहीं है। They boasted, वो ऐसा boast करते, time नहीं है, जैसे मतलब पता नहीं क्या हो, Barack Obama या Donald Trump और आजकल, right? तो उसके बाद वही है, no, ये आपकी witness से strength नहीं है। Time नहीं है जो लोग कहते हैं ना, ये witness, time नहीं होने का मतलब आपको जिंदगी की कुछ चीज छोड़ देनी पड़ी, और आपको अपना time invest करना है relationship पे, domain expertise पे, अपनी hobbies पे। Friends, आज भी मैं, every year, I go to Himalaya Sport Trekking, every year, I go for photo shooting, every year, still I go for dance parties and musical evenings. ये तो Baroda branch ने physical program रख नहीं पाए, otherwise, इस बार अगर orchestra Vinod ji ने रखा होता, तो थोड़ा फायदा मैं भी उठा लेता, आप लोगों के साथ थोड़ा सा मैं भी का लेता और jhum लेता। So मैं ये कह रहा हूं, आप youngsters हैं, you have all the reasons to live a wonderful life. You should be excellent in finance and why not romance? In finance and why not romance? You should be excellent in taxation and you should be wonderful on the cricket ground also. आप एकदम healthy होने चाहिए। So that takes me to the next point and that is, by true professional की एक और खासियत होती है, true professional की एक बहुत ही important खासियत होती है and that is health. Health, I'll come to that part also, but एक important चीज आपके साथ share करना चाहता हूं and friends, believe me, आप, मैं जो कुछ बोल रहा हूं, मैं किसी book में से खतरनाक चीज नहीं बोल रहा हूं। मुझे ऐसा लग रहा है, सामने मेरे friends बैठे, भाई age का ही difference है, बाकी दोनों same हैं। सामने मेरे friends बैठे, उनको तीन-चार चीज बताना चाहता हूं, तो एक मैंने आपको बताई, domain expertise, जिस चीज में जाओ, उसमें एकदम expert होने चाहिए। पूरे इंडिया में से, आपका नाम होना चाहिए, हैदराबाद वाले भी आपको बुलाए और Bangalore वाले भी आपको बुलाए, तो बात है। Second चीज जो मैंने आपको कही, टेक्नोलॉजी, boss, बिना टेक्नोलॉजी के काम कैसे चलेगा? And the best thing is, वो जमाने चले गए, जब आपको seniors के पीछे भागना पड़ता था, टेक्नोलॉजी की वजह से seniors आपके पीछे भागेंगे। आने वाले साल में देखिए, in the coming decades, seniors आपके पीछे भागेंगे, आपको मेरे पीछे भागने की बारी नहीं आएगी, मैं आपके पीछे भागने वाला हूं। ये है आपका, just imagine, क्या opportunities है आपके पास? What great opportunities you have? And तीसरा मैंने आपको कहा, time management, life management, एक ही life मिलती है, on a lighter note, on a lighter note. मैंने ऐसा सुना है कि अगर बहुत अच्छे काम किए हो, तो पुनर्जन्म मिलता है। मैंने तो कोई अच्छे काम किए नहीं है, तो मुझे तो एक ही life मिलने वाली है, आपके अभी मुझे doubt है। तो जब एक ही मिलने वाली है, तो क्यों मैं इसको सबसे बेहतर तरह से किया जाए? सबसे बेहतर, जब office में हो, तो office में full passion के साथ काम किया जाए और जब बाहर हो, cycle चलाते वक्त या running करते वक्त, तो उसमें भी वही passion है। So that is about time management, life management. एक छोटी सी चीज मैं आपको बता रहा हूं, if you can reduce a certain extent of your social media, मैं ये नहीं कहता हूं, social media छोड़ दो, मैं छोड़ने की कोई बात ही नहीं करता। But ये जो Instagram, Facebook के बहुत time देते हैं, अगर थोड़ा सा कम कर दे हम, right? थोड़ा सा कम कर दे, तो I am sure about it, आप जिंदगी में ज्यादा अच्छी तरह से focus कर सकते हैं। मतलब अगर आपने ऐसा कुछ किया हो, instead of your mobile, अगर आपके घर पे laptop हो, तो आप Instagram और Facebook laptop पे ही रखिए, mobile में मत रखिए। इससे क्या होगा? दिन में एक बार check करना, check कर लो, हफ्ते में एक बार check कर लो, mobile पे होगा, every few minutes, वो bling करता रहेगा और आपको ये पता चलेगा कि पड़ोसी के बच्चे का second standard में first friend कहा गया या आपके एक friend एक नहीं car ले ली, या आपकी कोई friend McDonald's में चली गई। I don't think we require all these things of every five minutes, that is distracting. Time management के एक important चीज है, distractors को ढूंढिए। मैं एक बहुत practical चीज बता रहा हूं, अपने पूरे दिन को analyze करके तीन चीजें लिखिए, सबसे ज्यादा time कहां पे खराब हो, and make a strategy. See, आप खुद strategy बनाएं, हम बड़े लोग कौन होते हैं, आपको कुछ भी advice देने के लिए? आप खुद decide करिए कि आपको क्या लगता है, आप कैसे enhance करना चाहते हैं अपनी life को? So, एक चीज जो मैं आपसे उम्मीद करता हूं, एक चीज जो उम्मीद करता हूं, Vinod ji है यहां पे, he will also agree with me, कि boss, पढ़ा-लिखा आदमी वो नहीं होता जिसकी mark sheet पे marks होते हैं। पढ़ा-लिखा वो होता है, जो domain expertise के साथ-साथ socially responsible, मतलब मुझे एक CA का student, wrong side से vehicle चलाता हुआ देखिए, तो थोड़ा पेट पे दुखता है। This is not be expected from a CA student, right? You might be a rank holder at India level, लेकिन जैसे ही wrong side से आपने vehicle चलाया, सामने वाले को परेशान किया, I think, यहां पे कुछ problem है, यहां पे कुछ problem है, no, इसका मतलब मैं दूसरों को disrespect करता हूं। ये नहीं चलेगा। By charge, बड़े हो गए आप और कहीं पान की पिचकारी मार दी, आप लोग तो नहीं मारते अभी, लेकिन कहीं chungam बेक दी, खा के, तो I think this is not what is expected. Being socially responsible, traffic sense को maintain करना, right? अपना attire, office में जा रहे हो, तो office का dress पहन के जाए। Of course, dance party में जा रहे हैं, तो मुझे आपको बताने की जरूरत ही नहीं है। You know better than me, what should be there? So, मैं एक simple सा example आपको देता हूं, बहुत ही simple। Friends, इंडिया में तो सब देवी-देवता ने अपने-अपने भारत त्यावर ले लिए, सोमवार किसी का है, मंगलवार किसी का है, division of labor का इस अच्छा example कहां मिलेगी? So there is one particular temple where I go every Thursday and it's in a very narrow lane. What I see is, there are many people who come up with huge cars and they park in such a way that the streets are blocked. They go to temple, they come back within some twenty minutes, but for twenty minutes, there is a havoc. Tell me, इनको religious कहेंगे क्या? इनको religious कहेंगे, जो सिर्फ मंदिर में जा रहे हैं, road block करके, या उनको religious कहेंगे, जो अपनी वजह से दूसरों को taklit नहीं दें। So I think being socially responsible is utmost essential for everyone. अब मैं आपको एक दो और चीज बताता हूं, very quickly and mind up. Sir, एक बहुत important चीज है professional skill and that is health. क्योंकि जिस दिन health काम नहीं करती ना, उस दिन कुछ काम नहीं करता। See, you are youngsters, तो youngsters को बहुत interest होता है boyfriend-girlfriend में। Believe me, जिस दिन आपकी health काम नहीं करती ना, उस दिन आपकी girlfriend भी आपको पसंद नहीं आएगी। मैं बता रहा हूं आपको, चार लोग propose भी करेंगे ना, तो वो सुना ही नहीं देगा, जब body ठीक से काम नहीं कर रही हो। Health is utmost important, so I want the CA student to get up early in the morning. I want him to go for morning walk or running or cycling. I want him to go to gym, I want him to go for aerobics और आजकल जैसे zumba चलता है, go in zumba, no problem. Aerobics में जाइए, zumba में जाइए, gym में जाइए, yoga करिए, so many things.